Good evening and welcome to the June 27th meeting of the Abbott and Bullock Selectment. This meeting is being recorded. Is there anyone else in the audience also recording? Seeing none, just want to say that this meeting is being operated in our hybrid system. I don't have the speech with me right now. If you go through everything, we have one member participating remotely. Mr. Carpenter, if you just let us know that you are able to hear.
I can hear you.
All right, thank you. If no one else is recording, can we stand for the call?
So I know it's a remote meeting and we weren't anticipating that till recently, so just to cover ourselves, I can just say that Master Brimmar allows us to have the remote meeting participation through July 15th of this year under the current legislation. So we do have one member that is participating, as you said, remotely. It was planned that way, so as you said, it would have to be a roll call vote for this evening, but we just want to make sure we make the statement ahead of time. Also, just a reminder on that topic that my understanding is the legislature is considering extending that date, but it hasn't, at least as of Thursday, it hasn't passed yet. I haven't seen anything yet and it's coming. So we'll keep our eye on it and let you know. But until then, after July 15th, we're not allowed to have it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we have one person signed up under public comment, Doreen Gudrich. Want to step up?
Thank you, Mr. Acting Chairman. So I looked at the agenda and didn't say anything, so I figured I'd come up and sign up under public comment. But I heard at the last meeting, which I had heard through the grapevine, that this is your last meeting. So I just wanted to be here to congratulate you on the work you've done over the years. I mean, you came in, the youngest selectman ever elected, and, you know, took it, hit the ground running. You know, you worked on the plastic bag bin, which was important to you, and ultimately important to the residents and the businesses. And everything that you've done, you've approached with professionalism, and we appreciate that. I wish you continued success in your future endeavors, which we know what that will be. But you've been a great selectman, and this may take you away for a few years, but my sense is you'll be back in some form or fashion because public service is in your blood, and I know that, and I see that. And you truly have made a difference in your five and five-plus years on the board, and you should be very proud of yourself. So congratulations. You'll be missed.
Thank you. And thank you for coming in, just to say that. I do appreciate it. All right, under public hearings and presentations, we have Global Ventures Group Inc. at 772 Southbridge Street for a motor vehicle Class II and auto repair license scheduled for 6:30. Is the applicant here? Is there a motion to open the hearing?
Make a motion to open the hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
A roll call vote. Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Carpenter?
Aye.
And the chair votes yes. If you want to, just, you can come up to the table and tell us a little bit about the application and name and address for the record.
My name is Joseph Pacassio. I'm the Vice President of Global Venture Group. DBA Lux Auto Plus, who's been operating in Auburn for the past seven years at 525 Washington Street. Our lease is currently up and rent factors, we, the way that our lease was structured was three years with extensions. Each extension, the lease does, the rent does incrementally go up. So whereas unfortunately, Michael Perro had passed away over the past couple of years, Perro Automotive Automotive, building is currently empty. So instead of continuing with a rental, with a rent increment, we'd like to move down to an existing auto group, which is Perro's Automotive at 720, and 720, actually 722 is what it's at. There are already an existing auto group there. It's just a smaller facility, much lower rent factor, and yet we still need to stay in the community. We've been sponsoring Little League, the ice rinks, the softball teams, and I just, we have to leave the community after seven years of sponsorship. So the building's available. We signed the lease on it. It's a current auto facility with auto repair use. So we're just simply seeking to transfer our license from 525 to 720.
Thank you. Board members have any questions or comments? All right, seeing none. Thank you. Is there a motion to close the hearing?
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Is there a second?
There's a second, but have we asked for a butters?
Have a butters been notified?
If you have the notifications, we could send them all out.
I don't see any of them.
Mr. Chairman, I was just wondering if anybody was on the phone or in person who might want to, before we close the hearing?
Yeah, yeah, there are, there are no butters in the audience. But, and I don't think there are any on the call. We are the only ones on the call. I'll check then. Anyone butters? Nope.
Back to the motion.
By a roll call vote, Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Carpenter?
Aye.
And the chair votes yes. Is there a motion on the license? Is there a motion to approve the motor vehicle Class II license and auto repair license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled? Said license is subject to upon it to the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with license with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A roll call vote, Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Carpenter?
Aye.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So moving forward, we're coming to the town to get the licensing, is that what?
Yes, through the chair, we will send you something through our office, and you might have to wait a minute, but we'll pick you up at our office and we'll stay there and, um, approach the department if you might work with us.
Yes.
Yes, we'll just work with us, and so make sure that, um, we have the license lined for you.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you too. The communications, we have none. Step four, general items. Outdooring the team of license, Boston 25 News and Packer Chalk Golf Course. So we have those application packets.
For the chair, if you'd like, I can explain. There are two items on here that we put on here for the upcoming Boston 25 News Zip Trip that is being held on July 22nd at the Packer Chalk Golf Course. So it's an exciting event. It will be outside at the golf course, and as such, they will be having some speakers with some music. We're not having live entertainment, you got me aware, but just to cover our bases, we wanted to make sure that they had an appropriate outdoor license if there was any kind of amplification for the speaker system. Likewise, the second item is for the same event, and it is an open air license, which we require when a private party puts an event on at a public property. It's just the board's license. So those are the two events. The, again, once again, it's the Boston 25 News Zip Trip, and they will be setting up early in the morning, obviously respectful of neighbors. And the program generally starts, I think somewhere between 7:00 and 8:00, they start interviewing people and highlighting businesses and individuals and groups from the town of Auburn, and it runs until 10:00.
Is the applicant present or?
No, they're not.
All right, are there any questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, is there a motion? Certainly, approve or deny?
I'll make a motion to approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void with the conditions of the DCG to be placed upon the license.
Is there a second?
Second.
A roll call vote, Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Carpenter?
Aye.
And the chair votes yes. And is there a motion on 5B?
I'll make a motion to approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Is there a second?
Second.
By a roll call vote, Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Carpenter?
Aye.
And the chair votes yes. This is by unanimous vote. Town of Auburn Senior Center One Day Beer and Wine License. We have the application there as well. Is anyone here for the senior center?
I can handle that one, thank you. So as you can see in your packet and from the application, we are in the process of planning for a 50th anniversary, hard to believe, 50th anniversary of the Rangworth Royal Grand Senior Center at Four Goddard Drive on September 22nd, 2022. The event will be an open house type setup, and it will run from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And the senior center and the council and agent and friends of the senior center would like to have a one day beer and wine license, so we can have a nice event at the senior center at that time. We have enclosed the town employees who are certified for serving, as we've done at the golf course in the past years with the one day beer and wine licenses. So under the ABCC requirements, this does not need to go to the state for approval. This just goes to the licensing authority, which is the board of selection on the one day beer and wine.
Do board members have any questions or comments?
I see that the room shows where the serving, they're not serving outside, there will be no consumption outside.
That's correct. When you get the one day beer and wine license, you have to show the premises that you're going to be serving in, and correct. It would not be outside. If it were to be outside, it would be another permit as well.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Doreen Gudrich again. I actually am assisting with this event. I'm really excited about it. As you said, it's going to be an open house, and they plan to serve food, which I'm assisting with hors d'oeuvres and light desserts and stuff. And I certainly think that having beer and wine to accompany these refreshments would be a great addition to a wonderful celebration of the 50th anniversary. And I hope that people are paying attention and get involved and come to this wonderful celebration. Thank you.
If there's nothing else from any members or members of the public, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the license provided all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void with the conditions of the DCG to be placed upon the license.
Second.
A roll call vote, Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Carpenter?
Aye.
And the chair votes yes. We have the Fairfield Inn and Suites, 718 A Southwood Street, hotel motel license. Yeah, members, or I'm sorry, the applicants, yes, are present. So we don't need to open a hearing. So yeah, I'll invite you up to, and talk about it. I'm sorry. The chair isn't here today, and I didn't get much prep, so I'm just...
Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity. So, yeah, we've been in the town for 17 years, and we're closed due to the small two-room fire that we had in the attic, and we're also undergoing full renovation for the 14, seven-year renovation that's required by the brand. So we completed all of those repairs, but working with the building, fire, and the board of health. And we're really excited to reopen with a completely renovated facility, and look forward to your support in getting this back in the business.
Thank you. Board members have any questions or comments?
So I'm assuming this has gone through all the permits, everything's been signed off except for the two conditions placed upon it?
Through the chair, that's correct. The building commissioner would have to issue this authority for the application to once again reopen.
Mr. Carpenter, any questions?
Not at this time.
Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state, town, and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all of the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG placed upon the license.
Second.
A roll call vote, Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Carpenter?
Aye.
And the chair votes yes. I'm guessing the next one for the common vehicle lawyer license is also. And if there's anything else you wanted to add, it just allows us to have gatherings in the hotel. Board members have any questions or comments on this license?
So I assume that everything's caught up, up to date.
Through the chair, attached in the application for actually both of these licenses is the DCG recommendation. So this did go through DCG, and the getting this is, if the applicant is required to obtain all necessary permits and inspections. So some he may have now and some he's going to need, but he won't be able to open until he does. There's a grease trap though, we needed, there's an occupancy code. So there are things that he'll have to get before he...
There are things outstanding, I just want to make sure. And I know it says it on the license.
Yeah.
After no other questions or comments, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the license provided all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Second.
A roll call vote, Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Carpenter?
Aye.
And the chair votes yes. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chair, may I ask, seeing as that would be the last group that's in here that's not in the public, we have our DPDW director here for item 6A, if you would be so kind as to consider moving that item up?
Make a motion to move up item 6A?
Is there a second?
Second.
A roll call, Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Carpenter?
Aye.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you. Have a good night.
So through the chair, I thank you for doing that. I'd like to ask our DPDW director, Joanna Paquelin, to come up and explain this grant and what, Joanna, if you want to...
Yeah, you can come up to the table.
We are excited about this grant, and just, I had mentioned this to the board in the past, and I don't recall if I did it by email, so just for purposes of the public, we want to let the public know. And I know Mr. Chambers had asked some questions about it as well. So it's on the agenda. I sent the board members today a packet of additional information, and I want to hand this to you, so you each have a copy. And just, I'll give a real high level, over, be a very basic intern to Joanna for the details, but I want to thank Joanna and Joe Fahey from the school department, and Chief Todd Lemon, and a number of people on Joanna's staff at DPDW, Assistant DPDW Director in one area, who has put a lot of work into this. We were excited. We found out about this grant very last minute from the state, and they said that the focus was traffic management. And I think some of you have heard the chief say it, that one of the highest volume of complaints that they received category-wise at the police department is traffic and speeding. So we thought this was a great opportunity to put together a grant. We did put it together. We made it in time for the deadline. The board did approve us putting this grant in, and we were funded 100% of what we requested, which was over $480,000. As of today, we have signed our side of the documents, but the state is still working on their end. So we can't actually start the project until the state executes the grant docs, which could still be several weeks. The city's a very competitive grant, and they're still getting together everything that they need on their end to implement it. So with that being said, I'll let Joanna explain what the grant actually does, and you can probably refer to your locust map in that package that I just gave you. And for Mr. Carpenter, who's not here to have a hard copy, but he's, he's online, we can explain it, and I know I emailed it to you, Mr. Carpenter. So if you want a hard copy at any point, I'll keep one for you in the office.
Okay.
So overall, the grant is mainly a combination of more visible speed limit signs, so they'll, they'll be flashing so that can make people more aware of the speed limit than speed radar signs that actually measure the, the speed of the vehicle as well as showing the speed limit, as well as actuated crosswalks. So, and these, these would be more situated in areas of town that have, that we want to focus on, on the safety of pedestrian public. So more in line with the schools, as well as recreational areas like the Work and Arena, Lomansky Park, and the Pappas Complex. So the, so as long, as well as the, with the pedestrian signals, there'll be, you know, the button actuated pedestrian lights, as well as a more defined, some, some bar crosswalks kind of need to be a little bit better aligned. So we would have additional handicap ramps installed with that. In addition to that, there's going to be equipment that the police will have for, to, to detect speeding and, and record it as well with LiDAR technology, which I'm not really that well versed, but, but it's, it's equipment that they, they need to be able to enforce the speed limits. So I don't know if you'd like me to get into more of the detail of the locations of the, the signs, but...
Well, I do have a couple of questions on that, because some residents have voice concerns, especially like Pine Harris, Oxford Street North and Brimmar. Just want to make sure that that's good. I can't really tell from the map. So I just wasn't sure if that was covered in this. Just again, they reached out, so I want to make sure that's covered. I'm ecstatic that you guys put the work in, received this grant. So any improvements you'd like to help us, if those are addressed, I'd be here.
I was looking for the same thing. That's why I had Google Maps up when I was trying to...
So the, the majority of, well, the, so there's a few areas in town that's addressed. West Street, which is in front of the, the new, the middle school, Oxford Streets, Street North, which would be in front of the police station and the ice rink, that, that area. Swanson Road would be at both schools, at the Swanson, Swanson Road Intermediate, as well as the Brimmar School. Then Brimmar Ave would be, I'm sorry, Brimmar Ave is, is at the, in, in that, that area of Brimmar School. And then Auburn Street would be at the daycare facility, just because that, that it seemed like there's, there's a, you know, there's a sight distance issue as well as, you know, more, more of a possibility of pedestrian activity. And then Packer Chalk Street would be at the Packer Chalk School in addition to near the Pappas Complex. So I don't think that we would be addressing all of the streets. We were just more, more focused on, on the areas that, that would, you know, be, we'd be looking at improving the public safety and...
And through the chair, I could add to what Joanna said. The grant, the focus of the grant and many of the questions that we had to answer, it was an electronic grant. So we had to do it all electronically and answer questions. But the state was looking to see if we were going to be doing speed management and traffic planning in the areas of schools, daycare centers, and elder facilities. So senior center and any senior housing. So as you can see here, in parks. So, and that was because of the youth and the children. So as Joanna said, it's primarily, it had to be focused on those areas. While we recognize there are many areas in town that would probably like to have additional speed control measures, this particular grant has to focus on those schools, playgrounds, and senior facilities that we identified in the grant.
Does a church count as any of that? Could it fall under, if they have programs regularly? I mean, St. Joseph's is up on the corner of Auburn and Oxford Street, and I know they do things occasionally. Would that fall under the program, or is it specifically looking at, it has to be a school or a park or?
The grant questions were specific to parks and recreation, school facilities, and elder facilities.
Okay.
Churches were not a category that were mentioned in there. And at this point, the, the grant, these are the areas that we're focused on. If we could change it, it would require a change in scope with the state to be approved. But that was not one of the questions on the grant application of the plan. I know we had to identify the names and addresses of each of the schools, daycare centers. You can see it in the summary. The Housing Authority, the senior center, other housing authority properties, another senior facility, the Pappas Complex, Boyce Street Lot, and Lomansky Park. And it also asked for which areas might have been identified in their economic development plan that had been paid for by a grant from the state. And that plan did identify access to facilities, parks, and other spaces, so we had to tie it into that as well.
Again, I appreciate you guys going through that. We'll look to address some of the other traffic concerns. I don't know if the police department has a tally of locations or something that for non-grant funded traffic concerns, we can look to address as well.
Through the chair, if there are certain areas that the board is concerned about, they can ask us for a report, and we can go back and check with the chief and see if they have a report. There is police crash data that is used, and I think, is it called IMPACT? Is that the, it's a short acronym for the state's database that we do have access to, and that shows histories of accidents in every community. So we do have that information.
I appreciate it.
IMPACT, I'm sorry, it's called IMPACT.
And I can thank you for putting this on there. I know you guys have been doing a lot of work on it. I just want to make sure that, you know, the residents are hearing about what's happening. And I know typically government doesn't always move as fast as we'd like it to, but again, for people to know that things are being worked on, it's just not happening overnight. I appreciate, again, the effort. And I'm assuming that they've reached out to other people in the past. I don't know for sure, but as the newest member, I wanted to make sure that they could see that you guys have done work in the past.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sorry, I'm going to ask another one. So I saw a bunch seem to be on Swanson Road, which makes sense going to the school. I know that some residents take Murray Ave and kind of use that just as a walking area, or they cross over, not really Murray Ave, but on that, from Briar Cliff, across to Murray Ave, down to Swanson. Do they all have to be within a certain distance of the school? So it makes sense to put all of them on Swanson Road. Would there be any benefit to moving it to that Murray Ave, Oxford Street corner, or would that be moving it too far, I guess, from a school to really fit the?
I can double check with Joe Fahey and Chief Lemon. These were identified based on where the school sees the most pedestrian activity during school, when the children are coming school, when the children are coming back and forth or through certain sporting events, where the police see their activity, where the schools see the activity, where the walking paths are for the children during the school day. So those were the areas that were prioritized. So my guess is if that's, if that's the sections that the school felt that they wanted the signage, that would have been the areas that they chose. Is that, would it actually run out into the site?
We did, we, we went out onto the site. Um, we looked at the areas and, um, we, I mean, we were, it was a combination, you know, we, we relied heavily on, on, um, Joe Fahey from schools as well as Chief Lemon, um, you know, based on what he's seen and, and he's heard from the residents and, and what complaints he's heard. So, um, so that, that was sort of the, the guidance as well as, you know, the restrictions from the grant.
Thanks. Anything else from any of the board members?
Good, thank you.
Sure. And I should mention, when we do get the go ahead to do this, it's at that point that we can start ordering the signage, et cetera. And we have had this information up on our website because there was a public outreach effort. So we did put it up early on and we can post it again, just to make sure the public's aware of where the signage and the traffic control issues will be, if you think that will be helpful.
More information's helpful. I mean, it does, I can say going through, sorry, through the chair. Going through the website, um, I'm not telling you I'm technically savvy, but it's hard to find information. And I don't know how to necessarily resolve that, but I tend to default to it's a B issue and anything. So if it was on there and fell down, um, if you could bring it back to the top, that'd be helpful.
No, that's right. I think it was probably at the time we applied, we chose maybe March or so.
Yeah, it was very early.
This is a, yeah, it was a quick turnaround on the state's side too. So we can put it up there again. It's, uh, we had actually, as part of the commitment to the state, once you get approval for your grant, you just need to keep the public informed as to what you're doing and where you're doing it. So we will be doing that anyway.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else from anyone else? Yes, and we don't need a motion. So, hey, thank you, Joanna.
Thank you for taking that out of order.
All right, under gift acceptances, we have none. Proclaimations and recognitions. Vote to issue proclamation for her 100th birthday to Rita Dale, oh, Rita Sim, uh, Simmons, uh, Simmons, excuse me, on Dale Avenue. And the proclamation is in members packets. So are there any questions or is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the proclamation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Fair roll call vote, Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
Mr. Carpenter?
Aye.
Chair votes yes? Vote. Vote to issue a proclamation for Tony Pellegrino to recognize his service as a CERT leader for 20, since 2017, 2007. Geez, I'm all over the place tonight, I'm sorry.
Through the chair, I just, uh, we found out just the other day that Tony Pellegrino, who again has been CERT leader since 2007, is going to be stepping back from that role and retiring from that role. And he's just done a tremendous job on behalf of the town of Auburn. He, he's been an excellent leader. He's been great to work with, with CERT. So we thought it would be appropriate if the board voted to approve of a proclamation. We're in the process of working with the CERT team to see what the timing might be on when to present it and whether Mr. Pellegrino wants to be there in person or not. You know, I'm told he's rather shy and shies away from public recognition, but even if he wasn't at a meeting or at an event, we thought it'd be nice for the board to issue the proclamation. If it's within your policy for issuing, uh, proclamations, we also have ordered him a plaque. That probably won't be done until the end of August or so. So we're hoping maybe after the summer when people are no longer on vacation, that maybe we could find an opportunity to recognize him, whether it be at a board meeting or at a CERT meeting. It would be nice to thank him.
Board members have any questions or comments or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation for Tony Pellegrino, who's a CERT leader since 2007.
Second.
Fair roll call, Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
Mr. Carpenter?
Aye.
And the chair votes yes. Moving on, we have a discussion and potential vote, um, on the summer meeting schedule. So at our last meeting, I had mentioned that I won't be at either of these meetings. And Sarah had said that she wouldn't be able to make, I believe it was the one in August? Someone jumped in if I'm wrong about that?
Correct.
So.
Uh, through the chair, through the temporary chair, I'll say, I had a conversation with the chair prior to the last meeting. And just so everyone knows, these were the two dates that were regularly scheduled for the board to meet. We didn't pick an off date. And I think the recommendation of the chair at the time was to have it toward the end of the month since you're having a meeting now, uh, rather than having another one in two weeks and then waiting, say, six weeks or so. I would tell you that it, in August, it probably, it's probably a little quieter because we're just past the start of the fiscal year. We have a lot of things that might come on, uh, the July meeting and then again in the fall. So as long as you have a quorum for the 22nd, you could probably proceed. If there was something that was really critical that we have, we'd let you know and see if you would schedule another meeting on your regular night in August. And that way we'd ensure we have a vote. As you know, with, under our charter, you need to have three in the affirmative for anything to pass. So if you do get down to a night where you do only have three members for something to actually pass, you need all three to agree. So if there was something critical like that, and maybe the chair may want to at that time postpone that type of, uh, item for the next meeting.
Well, it sounds like, yeah. Dan, would you be able to make the August 22nd meeting? I, I also feel weird voting on it since I, I won't be at either of them, but if, Dan, if you're able to, then at least we'll have three people for the 22nd.
As of now, I would say we can make, um, but obviously subject to work minutes, but I think it should, it has been eight years, so I hope it should, uh, do this up.
Well, that, is there a motion?
If it's a reconsideration, I, someone who voted in the past has to make a motion to reconsider.
Oh, um, that's what we did vote to tentatively?
Yeah, it was, I, I believe through the chair, Mr. Carpenter wasn't at the last meeting and I think the chair just said that you could defer to this meeting and tentatively set the date if, if he was going to be available on August 22nd. Everyone at that time was available on July 27th. Uh, I, I would say this, if you do schedule it and something were to arise, like anything else, we can always either find another date, a second date, add a later date. But for planning purposes, it would be good if, if we know here was, we could make that a right agenda.
So we need a motion for these 25th?
The motion to set the summer schedule.
Okay, so we do need that.
So make a motion to set the summer schedule with the dates proposed, uh, subject to change based on items or reports.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Fair roll call, Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
Mr. Carpenter?
Aye.
And the chair votes yes. With that, we have a vote to appoint a resident to the committee to recognize individuals who have contributed to the town of Auburn. I think this is the only applicant that we got. They just emailed town manager and myself, Todd Crane from the planning board, and his email is attached in members packets. So this would require unanimous vote for tonight. I think since he was the only applicant, see no problem appointing him tonight and just giving that committee the full three members that it needs to get going and start doing what it was created to do. But if members want to hold off until there are more members or, uh, Todd Crane is available to come into a meeting, I'm open to it. Don't know what the other two members are thinking.
So make a motion, we appoint.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded. Fair roll call vote, Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
Mr. Carpenter?
Aye.
And the chair votes yes. All right, so that committee is established then. That's all three. We've gone town manager items. We have the Blue Sox event. So I'll turn it over to the town manager.
Thank you. Uh, just a brief update on the Blue Sox event that was held a couple, let's see, that was only a week ago. It was a week ago Wednesday. It was a great event. You're lucky, the weather was beautiful. It, I know some of the select members were there. It was, it was really nice to have an event that was focused on Auburn like that. The park is beautiful. And everyone who participated seemed to be really thrilled to take part in it. So, um, I double checked with the Blue Sox just to see if they had any information they could share with us as a follow up. And they sold a total of 546 tickets for the Auburn, for Auburn night. Of those, 171, Ashley went through the fundraising link. If you recall, there was a link and if you purchase a ticket that way, a $5 donation was made to the Tarantino Charitable Fund. They raised $855 from those tickets for the charitable fund. We also had, uh, participants in the ceremonial first pitches, throw, because there were a number of them. We had our school superintendent. And then we recognized our first responders and public health department and, and school nurses for all the work that they did during COVID. So we had one representative each from the fire rescue department, the police department, the public health department and the school nurses, who actually got to throw a ceremony on the first pitch, along with the school superintendent. That night also happened to be a PTO fundraising night. So there was another event within the event. And it was really nice to see such a good turnout of Auburn residents and I think everyone had a nice time.
Board members have any questions, comments?
Thank you for that. It was a great event and, uh, you know, it's nice to see people in town at an event like that. I'd love them all to be in the room with us, but, uh, maybe we have to have a baseball game or something. It was nice to see, uh, a lot of community members on the bus. Thank you.
Thank you. Our, our pleasure for putting it together. It was, it was exciting. Oh, and I should mention, I, I apologize, uh, we had an Auburn sophomore who sang the National Anthem. And you know, being that, he just did an outstanding job. And we've asked him to sing the National Anthem at our Independence Day event, which I should just use this opportunity to say, it is this coming Thursday, the weather looks like it's going to be great, we're not going to have to have a rain day. But he'll be singing the National Anthem at that event and he, he did a great job. Just beautiful voice.
Uh, I will say that I was there on the grass. Unfortunately, I didn't get to see everyone. I was texting Julie, wondering, but just letting you know that I'd missed everyone. But, uh, it, it was great, even though, uh, the score didn't turn out so great for.
Yeah, I avoided saying that part of it. Yeah, they didn't win, but it was still really nice. And just a reminder of whether it's members of our community or other communities, the Blue Sox every Wednesday night through the season, uh, offers free tickets to first responders. They just have to bring some type of identification with them. And I believe they get up to, I think it's either four or five tickets. So it's a really nice feature on a Wednesday night for first responders, you know, everywhere if they want to take their family or go with their colleagues. It's, it's a nice event and a nice place to have an event. Thanks.
So if there's nothing else, move on to table items. Wasn't going to ask for a vote on either of these items tonight anyway, especially with three members. Since we have the unanimous and again, these are pretty big steps that the town could take. These are just things that I wanted the town to start thinking about and what to select and to consider, um, as I'm leaving. So, um, you know, we talked about, the former chair mentioned the plastic bag bin, something that, um, I really wanted to get past and was happy that we were able to get, get done on my time on the board. I'd love to see the town continue to move in that direction towards biodegradable, um, containers. And yeah, um, so there's just a note in the packet, um, that gives a little bit of the reason as to why. Uh, I, I think it's an important issue and also a draft bylaw and some resources that might help people, uh, to understand it and consider it. I don't know if, and other members want to add anything to it tonight? One of them looks like he is itching to talk, so.
I'm just wondering, are you sure you don't want to ask for a vote tonight? No, I appreciate the resources and we'll, uh, continue the discussion.
Um, Mr. Carpenter, I don't know if you want to add anything. I know you weren't here for, uh, the discussion at our last meeting when we started talking about it. This is, um, actually, I think you, you mentioned a few years ago when we first brought up the plastic bag bin, we talked about, uh, polystyrene or styrofoam and how, uh, it's almost as damaging at the time Duncan Donuts was still using their styrofoam cups. And I know you, you talked about those specifically. And of course they've since moved on to, uh, their, their paper ones. But again, I don't know if you, you wanted to add anything tonight?
No, I'm good, thank you.
So like I said, this bylaw, uh, we've got about 47 communities in Massachusetts that have already adopted something that's similar to it. I did essentially what I did with the plastic bag bylaws. I looked at the surrounding towns, looked at things that were, um, similar. Shrewsbury has one, so that was an easy one to pull from again. And, uh, took the pieces that I thought would work for Auburn and made a very simple draft. Uh, most stores are moving away from styrofoam, polystyrene anyway. So, um, it's, it's just good to help push people along in that direction. But if there's nothing else, um, to take any action on it.
Through the chair, on a completely separate note, I, I should have said when I mentioned on the Independence Day, just if you don't mind, just to remind anybody, so the events start at 5 o'clock. We have some, you know, children's games and a couple of small rides. We have some vendors there, uh, some great food vendors, so we plan to bring your appetite. The program, the speaking program, where we have the veterans come in and, and present the colors, we have the National Anthem, we have a couple of speakers. That's around 10 minutes of seven with the band starting at seven. So it's really a brief speaking program, just to let people know, you know, how happy we are that they came. Our shuttles start at, I believe, 5:00 PM from Auburn Mall. So once again, Auburn Mall is a sponsor. They're allowing us to have our participants and, and attendees park at the mall. The WRTA, again, a great sponsor, they're providing buses for us and drivers. And AA Transportation, which is the school bus transportation company, they're also providing buses and drivers for us, which is no small feat in this economy with a workforce shortage to come up with drivers on a holiday and in the evening. So we're, we're thrilled. So we will have our shuttle system. There's obviously some parking in that general area. We always send out a code red message from the police department. I call it a targeted geographic code red message. It goes to the streets that are in that area, letting those residents know that certain streets have parking on one side or limited parking. And the band starts at seven and then the fireworks go off at 9:30. And then the shuttles will run until we get everybody out of the park after the fireworks, which generally go to about 10:00. So again, if there's any questions, we have all the information up on our website. I want to thank Bank Hometown also for sponsoring. Uh, they provided $2,500, which pays for the band, as well as some other things that we have at the park that evening. So we're thrilled for all of our sponsors. We thank them, then Auburn Mall, uh, Bank Hometown, WRTA and AA Transportation. And I hope I'm not forgetting anyone. Not a sponsor, but certainly a partner, is the Packard Truck Church. Uh, they are just wonderful to work with. Reverend Dennis Knight has a cookout for his church members and kindly and generously invites any of the town employees who are working that evening to stop by and have a bite to eat. So it's just a really nice community event. We're thrilled to have it again this year after hiatus due to COVID, so we're looking forward to it. So we'll hope to see you there in a pretty way.
Another lively one through the chair. You said you, you thanked them, but like what, is there a formal recognition of thanks or is it?
Uh, they're on all of the promotional materials. So we put their logo, uh, we put it on the flyer, we put it out, it's on our website, it's on social media. Everywhere we post it, it's in some of our public buildings, they get the recognition that way. And then that evening at the speaking program, we again, uh, mention all the sponsors and thankful.
I'd like to thank them as well.
Great.
All right. Next we have the discussion on the fossil fuel investments. Um, we continued this from the last meeting, so we want to find out more on whether or not the town, uh, the select board could move in that direction. Just say that I read through the charter and, um, my inter- Just say that I read through the charter and, um, my interpretation is that since the town treasurer was moved off the ballot, um, into a town employee that's actually hired to the town manager, uh, I, I would think that that would put the select board in some control over that position, but I'll turn to the town manager to ask if there was any, uh, discussion with town council.
So, yes, so, uh, Assistant Town Manager Ed Kessner, which had a discussion with town council, who on initial look said he would have to do more research to make sure he's giving the proper advice, but felt that it was a conflict with Mass General law, not with the town. That Mass General law provides certain, uh, powers and responsibilities to the treasurer, and he didn't want to make that determination without doing further work, research on it, so he's going to continue to look at it. And I believe he had that conversation actually today, uh, with, with Mr. Kessner.
Um, so with that, I'd just want to continue to table this item until, um, we have a stronger understanding of it, uh, but.
Yes, he'll be doing the research and come back to us, hopefully with more of our different information.
Anything else from the members? So, uh, we have no select board member items. Do members want to add anything? No? We have a minutes from 6:13, 2022.
So, panelists here, did you vote on that or?
We don't need to vote, um, just if there are any corrections or anything like that, we just accept them. Um, so seeing none, I just want to add something, there's only two days left to submit your flag designs to the flag committee, so, if you haven't already and you have a design, you should get on that. Um, and with that, uh, is there anything else?
Yep. So I want to say thank you for your service to the town, uh, I haven't been on the board long with you, but I've got to know you, I appreciate everything that you have done, whether we agree or not. Uh, you're certainly passionate, and I think the town really benefits from people such as yourself, and sad to see you.
Thanks, I appreciate that. And I'm sad that I only got three meetings with you, because, uh, they were a lot of fun.
Through the chair, I want to say the same thing, and I don't, I couldn't tell if Mr. Carpenter was going to speak, so forgive me if he was. I just want to thank you, you were great both as a member and as a chair, it was great to work with you, you've got some great ideas, you're always willing to look at a new way of doing business, and I think that's great, I think we should always be doing that. We appreciate it, we really are gonna miss you and wish you the best of luck, and I agree with Ms., Mrs. Goodrich's comments, I have a feeling you'll be back in some capacity at some point, and it's a benefit to the town, just, you know, we want to thank all of our elected officials, as you know, it's just harder and harder to get people to have the time and make the commitment to running and, and serving, so all of you who are currently on the board, you know, it is a time commitment, it takes away from your personal life and your family, and, you know, all of us in town administration, we do appreciate it and we thank you.
Thank you all. All right, if there's nothing else, is there a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
A roll call, Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Carpenter?
Aye.
And the chair votes yes. Good night, everyone.
Good night.